For your viewing pleasure, this broadcast of the Municipal Council Meeting of Alpena is made possible by the funding provided by the City of Alpena. Thank you for your generosity.
Good evening. Welcome to the Alpena City Council Meeting on June 4th, 2018. Call the order, please.
Hask, here. Johnson, here. Nielsen, here. Noah?
Here.
And Walagora?
Here.
Please rise for the pledge.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, modifications to the agenda. I have one request to add to the consent agenda. It would be C, and it would be Alpena Blues Coalition Request for Noise Variants on June 16th from 10:00 to midnight. Is that correct?
Yes.
I don't know if there's any more.
We'll give a motion.
Salute.
Circle. Hask?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Walagora?
Aye. Okay, approval of the minutes, regular session of...
Consent.
Yeah. Where was that on?
That was a motion.
C. Consent, C.
Okay, that's okay. Sorry.
That's right. Regular session of May 21st, 2018, and closed session of May 24th, 2018. Any issues or changes? Thank you. Citizens bearing forecounts on agenda, non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns. If you'd like to do so, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our records. This is the only time during tonight's meeting that you'll be allowed to address council. Please.
Give me else first, or...
No. You may be the only one. First come, first served.
Okay.
Tom Blow, 4378 Daggett Road.
I'm back mayor, just wondered if anything went down or happened, or any good news went on here or anything, on the matter I brought before the council last time?
Yes, sir. I didn't find anything that the council is going to be able to do for you. To my knowledge, it falls out of our jurisdiction. The Alpena Community College is a system of their own. We don't have authority over the college to authorize or make them willing to change their stance on you or your show. From what I understand, Bill can correct me if I'm wrong.
That's correct, yeah. We don't have any authority to require them to grant you permission to be there. We don't have any authority to tell them that they shouldn't allow you to be there either. They're an entity under themselves, and we don't control them. We don't have control over their board or what they do.
Aren't you the convening tax authority? I mean, you provide them, you tax the money that goes to them, and you control the entrances to and from the college. They have to comply with zoning, they have to comply with all the, you know, the federal everything else, don't they? Like the fire code and everything else. You're completely, you've got a lot of influence over there, mayor.
All right, I don't want to have an argument with you.
Oh, no, no argument, I'm just saying, you choose to do nothing.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good day.
Thank you. Sorry. Anyone else tonight?
Good evening. Ron Carpenter, 726 Long Lake Avenue. And my topic is the Trucks Road Amendment. In the last meeting, I submitted a petition with 49 signatures and addresses of the affected area of Long Lake Avenue. And that encompassed 39 livable dwellings, and there's about six of them that are, either there was no answer, or they're remodeling, they're going to stick. For 20 years, the ordinance worked, and even the area's had more businesses move in. The city staff met with Gilders on this, and the Reddymix, and Dave Marleski, but didn't ask for input from any residents. And I was wondering why that was. I mean, to do business in the city, various businesses should not have to travel to Hamilton Road and come back into town. I full well agree with that. I mean, it makes common sense. I get no axe to grind with the trucking community. Mr. Marleski's done work for me with his backhoe, and my entire driveway was poured from Gilders, placed from Gilders. So this isn't a personal thing, but as Mr. Solinger stated, if this is passed by the council, you cannot do it by name people. I mean, this is going to be far-reaching for all the active trucking companies that have dump trucks, or whatever situation it fits, as far as the body styles or truck styles. And if this is written correctly, I'd like to think that you can eliminate the truck traffic that's not doing business in the city, and still have this same route for the ones that want to do business in the city. Like if Mr. Marleski wants to do some work with his truck down at Shell's gas station, or where it runs down, he should be able to do that. There's nothing wrong with that, if you've got a bona fide concern with your business. But, you know, unfortunately, these truck routes, or bypass routes, whatever I call them, they don't run as a profile, and that's the beauty of it. It's been working for 20 years, and I feel that if this is written properly, the nuisances associated with them could be minimized for not only the residents, but we've got a nice cultural area over there on Johnston Street with the college and the museum, which is already a bottleneck. So in closing, I'd humbly like to approve the council's reject the proposed amendment in its present form. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Tonight's consent agenda, our bills to be allowed in the amount of $492,342.31, B is a budget amendment request for the sewer fund, and C is the Blues Coalition Noise Variance on June 16th from 10:00 to midnight. I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Walagora?
Aye.
And Hask?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carried.
All right, tonight I have one presentation. This is a retirement certificate for our, and of appreciation for our city assessor, Jeff Shade, who retired on Friday. I think Jeff is here. He'll join me up here. I'll read it, it's really lengthy, Jeff.
All right. (laughter)
I'm going to hold you up here for a while.
Happy birthday.
This is for...
It's his birthday.
This is his birthday. What a birthday gift.
Yes.
This is a recognition for Jeff Shade, presented on June 4th, 2018. Thank you for 18 years of dedicated service as the assessor of the City of Alpena. We truly appreciate your commitment and dedication. And as short as it is, I don't know if we could add anything else that wasn't said on Friday during his retirement ceremony. Jeff has really provided a unique service that we may or may not ever see again in Alpena, so we certainly appreciate it. You've been fantastic with the public, and council, and staff, and miss you greatly, my friend. (applause) No announcements, I have a couple of proclamations. First one is Alpena Blues Week. Whereas the Alpena Blues Coalition was started in November 2003 for the purpose of furthering blues music awareness and appreciation, and whereas the first Alpena Blues Festival was held in 2004, and subsequent successful festivals have been held each year since, and whereas the Blues Coalition provides a program called Blues in Our Schools, music outreach as a way of raising awareness and educating students in traditional American blues music, and whereas events sponsored in the past include blues bands at the Friday Night Downtown Concert Series, blues performances at various venues around town, and fighting hunger in our community, and whereas over the years, successful fundraisers have been held to support, promote, and promote awareness of upcoming Alpena Blues Festivals, held every June at the Alpena County Fairgrounds. This year's festival will be held on Saturday, June 16th, 2018. Now therefore, I, Matthew J. Walagora, by the virtue of authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Alpena, do hereby proclaim the week of June 10th through the 16th, 2018 as Alpena Blues Week in Alpena, and urge all citizens to recognize and support the efforts of the Blues Coalition's 15th Anniversary Blues Festival. And I think there's some wraps from the Blues Festival here.
Bring my voice, please.
Always.[647.32][647.32](laughter) Okay, and our next one is for World Environment Day, and prior to reading it, I've invited, or I will invite Madison Amlot to come up and give a brief presentation on it.
Hello. As I said, my name is Madison Amlot, and I'm here to present on World Environment Day 2018, this year's theme being Beat Plastic Pollution. To summarize what World Environment Day is, it's the UN's most important day for encouraging worldwide awareness and action for environmental issues. They want to bring together governments, citizens, civil society organizations, and businesses to take action against growing environmental concerns around the world, and it's celebrated in over 100 countries every year. Why they chose the theme of plastic pollution this year is plastic impact has become an ever-growing concern for the environment. Globally, up to 5 trillion plastic bags used each year, and 50% of all plastic pollution comes from single-use plastics, which I'll explain more on later on. Why this is especially pertinent to our community and to Michigan is that 22 million pounds of plastic end up in the Great Lakes annually, and microplastics pose a severe threat to our ecosystems and industries alike. The fishing industry has been severely impacted by microplastics. It's a growing concern each year. So looking at what the City of Alpena can do to participate tomorrow, June 5th, in World Environment Day, we'd like to encourage citizens to go single-use plastic-free tomorrow, and hopefully on in the future. This means reducing your plastic waste by not utilizing plastic straws, bottles, utensils, cups, and other disposable plastics. It's a simple lifestyle change that can have a profound impact on how much plastic pollution ends up in our lakes and in our communities. Additionally, we'd like to encourage citizens to participate in recycling and cleanup efforts by utilizing the recycling program that we already have, and just being more conscientious about what we're doing with our plastic waste and what we're throwing away, and additionally encouraging people to pick up plastic pollution that they may find in their own neighborhoods and around the city. And then I just have a copy of the proclamation. You have to really show us the whole room.
All right. Before you do that, I want to, just for those who don't know, Madison is actually an intern here in our building, and code enforcement department, has been for a few years now while going to school. She came to us last week with this idea, and I just want to applaud her for her initiative in putting this together and drafting the proclamation, so.
Very good.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. All right, and the proclamation. Whereas the City of Alpena recognizes that World Environment Day is scheduled for June 5th, 2018, and further recognizes this year's theme as Beat Plastic Pollution, and whereas the City of Alpena recognizes the global call to action to, by 2025, present and significantly reduce marine pollution of all kinds, in particular from land-based activities, including marine debris and nutrient pollution, and whereas the City of Alpena draws attention to the fact that 50% of all plastic pollution is by single-use plastics, and whereas the City of Alpena notes with concern the 22 million pounds of plastic pollution that ends up in the Great Lakes annually, and whereas the City of Alpena draws attention to the important impact the Great Lakes have on our community and the surrounding areas, and now therefore, I, Matthew J. Walagora, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Alpena, do hereby proclaim for the City of Alpena, June 5th, 2018, as World Environment Day. Further, the City of Alpena encourages all citizens to reduce plastic waste by going single-use plastic-free for World Environment Day and beyond by not utilizing plastic straws, bottles, utensils, cups, and other disposable plastics. And further, the City of Alpena encourages citizens to participate in cleanup efforts by committing to picking up plastic and other disposable waste around their neighborhoods and city. And further, the City of Alpena encourages its citizens to be more cognizant of disposing of plastic waste, and further encourages utilizing the existing recycling program. And further, the City of Alpena recognizes that the events taking place on World Environment Day will be registered on the Global United Nations Environment Program World Environment Day website, and be eligible for recognition, and further, that it will be done in compliance with the recommendations made in a Guide for Government Partners Looking to Celebrate World Environment Day, June 5th, 2018 Toolkit. I'll also just point out, just briefly while I'm coming up to be, Madison, is that I don't know if you're all aware that the state of Michigan, not as huge environmentally, but the state of Michigan banned local entities like ourselves from banning plastic bags, single-use plastic bags. So it came across our desk maybe twice in the last several years, as to whether Alpena would want to join a lot of communities in California, Hawaii, places like that that are coastal, and banning the use of single-use plastic bags in our stores and things like that. But just so you're aware, if it ever comes to our door again, that the state of Michigan banned the ban of single-use plastic bags. So it's basically up to us to not use them would probably be the alternative to fight that legislation. But thank you so much for the work that you did, and I really appreciate it. All right, down to Report of Officers. This is a request by Thunder Bay Arts Council for approval of sculpture location in Washington Avenue Park, and Tim Koonline is here for presentation.
Well, good evening. I am Tim Koonline, and I'm here on behalf of Thunder Bay Arts Council, primarily to ask for permission to place the incoming sculpture at a specific site in a city park. We've been consulting with city staff all along, and you all are generally aware of the progress of the sculpture series, the history of industry series that's coming. I think you received the general materials in your report. Without getting into too much detail, because I think you're all familiar with this, we have visited carmuse and selected 12 very large stones. Each stone is 10 ton, and you know that what we're trying to do is essentially create sort of a replica of Stonehenge with various pieces of artwork by Michigan and local artists related to the history of industry in Alpena, applied to those stones. The stones should be arriving in the next week or two. This is just one example. It doesn't look so large, but it's half-buried, and it is, that stone there with all the people in front of it is about 20 ton. The stone at Stonehenge are 13 feet high and are about 25 ton. And needless to say, we're being challenged getting those to Alpena from Roger City, even in the 21st century with all our technology, but slowly but surely, we're making progress, and hopefully those will arrive in the next week or two. The site locations, you know there are two sites for this series, the first of which five stones will be located at Alpena Community College, by the Wishing Well, which is historic for Native American copper processing, as well as the original site of the Besser block machine. So the five, initial five sculptures will go here. This is an aerial view with Danler Hall located here. That's, of course, college property, and this is just a close-up. So the stone will be located here, all oriented towards the summer solstice, and everything is laid out according to that trajectory, like Stonehenge. This is some of the artwork that will be appearing on these stones, just to give you some perspective, if you're interested, and give you more detail, but I don't want to take up too much time. One of the hallmark pieces is some material from an original Besser press. I will be using these wheels, these gears, and cans that will be coated in copper and look similar to the image, the artwork on the right, and those will be affixed to a stone, one of the five stones at that site. The second site, and the idea is to force some circularity around the sanctuary along the bypath. This is Washington Park, and this is what we're seeking permission for tonight. Washington Park will house one of these stones, about 10-ton stone, and feature an Alpena artist, Jacob Idema. You can see that this is, if you're familiar, this is where the We Make Good Chicken headquarters used to be, and now it's Alcona Health Clinics. There's a nice parking lot there, picnic tables and a tree right along the shoreline and the bypath with enough distance from the road. But it's beautiful view when you're heading out of town on Washington, as well as with the bypath. So the two sites for this next phase of sculpture, six in total, five at the college and one at Washington Park, are sort of further developing this plan of sculptures along the Alpena bypath, subsequent to what we saw last fall. This is the imagery that Jake Idema created. It's a high-wheel bike, bicycle, fitting for the Alpena bypath. It will be made, hand-forged out of metal and copper, and it will be affixed to this stone, which he picked, hand-picked. It's a 10-ton stone, if we can get it to Alpena. It will be the backdrop. Again, you're only seeing a portion of it because much of it is buried. It's about seven feet high. And this is the stone, the sculpture, that we would like located at the Washington Park site, and since it's city property, we're asking this evening for permission to locate this material at that site. These are just some renderings that model printing Allegro did for us. So I think what I'll do is introduce, we really need formal approval for this in order to move forward, but we're also moving into the third phase, and here with me this evening is Augie Matusik. We're moving, this is top secret, though, you have to promise you're not going to tell anybody, because the Alpena News coming out of the future article, maybe Wednesday or Saturday, and we don't want to blow it. So please don't broadcast this, but Augie, do you want to hear now? The third phase, it's really exciting. Augie came to me after the first two sculptures were introduced, the birds down at the duck park, the blue heron, and said, "Tim, I see the vision, and I want to be a part of this. I want to invest in this." And so we took it to the next step. This is the third phase of the sculpture series. It's a 10-year plan, working us through the 250th anniversary of the United States. You may know that the Alpena bypath started with the 200th anniversary of the United States. It was an anniversary celebration. Thunder Bay Arts Council initiated, the city, of course, very much involved and has been spearheading the expansion of that with other organizations. But the sculpture component never really was followed through with. There was one sculpture, as you know, in front of Besser Museum, and since then, various things have been added, a lot of historical artifacts such as the cannon up front, but artwork itself, the sculptures, were not followed through with, and we're resurrecting that idea. And so this art vision-Alpena concept, which Augie and Peggy Matusik endowed with the community foundation, so that we have a fund established for them to contribute and make this a reality, to have a series of 12 additional sculptures after the six that are coming in the next couple of months. So with that being said, we got an opportunity to get more stone than we needed for the six that are coming for this fall, and those would have to be transported with the rest. And what we have in mind is using the stone for three additional sculptures at Sitek Park, Bayview Park, and Avery Park, with the sculptures yet to be determined. So what I'd also like to do is ask for permission to work with city staff and determine exactly where and what, but because we have the stone available to us now, we want to take advantage of that and actually work with city staff to locate those when the time comes. Just to give you an idea of these sites, I think you're all familiar with, this is Sitek Park, out across from the road commission. This is Bayview Park, and we're thinking right in that grassy corner area next to the parking lot, so that as you're coming into Alpena, you would see a structure of some sort. And then Avery Park downtown. And if you look at this from a bird's eye view, the stone would be nicely configured around the sanctuary, tying this idea of stone architecture throughout our community, in addition to all of the other sculptures that are evolving. So with that in mind, I'd be more than happy to answer any specific questions you might But ultimately, I would like to seek permission for, at the very least, Washington Park, and then permission for city staff to work with us in establishing the other three sites.
Thank you, Tim. Any questions for Tim specifically?
No.
Personally, I was, I'm fine with both requests. I just assumed they were separate. The approval of the one at the Washington Park, and unless anyone's got an issue, I already talked to Greg a little bit about it, him and Rich and whoever needs to be involved will make sure that the planning is in keeping with any other future plans for any of those parks, which I'm not so sure that there are any, other than maybe the restaurants at Bayview. We really haven't talked too much about anything at the other two parks, so I'm fine with him working with staff if that doesn't...
It's exciting.
It is exciting. And nothing is, no pun intended, set in stone, but the ultimate objective is to make this as fit and make it look right, so we would certainly not want to interfere with any plans. There are a couple of private sites that we've consulted with in the last couple of days, and they were very excited about the prospects, so it'd be nice to have the city be a part of that as well. And you've been part of this from the beginning, so.
Sure.
Do you need a motion?
Yeah, two separate ones, please. One for the, one to approve the location that's at Washington Park for the current sculpture with the bicycle, and then a separate, a separate motion for, to allow him to work with staff for the other three city parks.
Okay, I'll move to allow Thunder Bay Arts Council to put the sculpture at Washington Avenue Park.
At the location, maybe.
And to work with council. And to work with city.
I'll second that. We got to get the first one done first.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Walagora?
Aye.
Hask?
Yes.
And Johnson?
Yes.
Motion carried. I move that we allow city to work with him for the other three spots, places for the sculptures.
Second that.
Noah?
Yes.
Walagora?
Haas?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And Nielsen?
Yes.
Motion carried.
So, just to be clear, we'll work with city on those three additional sites pertaining to the stone that are coming in the next week or two. And then there are obviously other sites that will seek permission for, either through city or council, as we move on into the next phase.
Certainly.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Augie. And I could stop this, the Board of Review Meeting Dates Resolution 2018-03.
With the recent hiring of Berg Assessing and Consulting, Inc. as the city assessor commencing today, the city will be one of several jurisdictions that the firm will be providing assessing services for. The General Property Tax Act requires that the July and December Boards of Review be conducted on specific dates in each of those months. Since the firm provides assessing services, including attendance at the Boards of Review for multiple jurisdictions, it's impossible for a qualified person to simultaneously attend all these meetings. To alleviate such problems, PA 122 of 208 was enacted that provides for alternative dates for the July and December Boards of Review, with the concern of the local jurisdiction. This will allow Berg Assessing to meet its obligation to be in attendance at these meetings to the benefit of the city and its taxpayers. Consequently, council was requested to adopt the attached resolution number 2018-03 that will permit the use of the alternative dates listed in the act. In addition, Alan Berg, the principal of Berg Assessing and Consulting, is here. I would like to introduce him because I know some council members have not met him or are aware of who he is. He has worked with the city the past couple of years, with Jeff Shea, when we did the residential reappraisal. And he has many years of experience as assessor. He is a level-three assessor, as is his wife, I believe.
Yes.
He's also that, so they are both in the firm and both are level-three assessors. He was in today at two o'clock, working with Patty Lacrosse on this transition, and just wanted to make him aware, not only to all the council members, but the public and staff, who may, at some point in time, deal with him, and, of course, the media. So, I don't know if you have anything you wish to say? The floor is yours, Alan.
Just thank you for the opportunity. It deserves the city, its residents, the council, the staff. The assessing functions have large shoes to fill with the outgoing of Jeff Shea. I've been able to dialogue with Jeff over the years. He is a great assessor, did the city a great job in the assessing function. So, we hope to keep that, we will keep that trend up. Obviously, there's a little bit of difference from the full-time every day. We do have a staff and answers the phone, so we're available for the city's residents, whatever issues might come up. And if there's any problems, as Mr. Sundin said, we've been working through lots of IT stuff. I think I'm pretty confident that even just from Friday to today, we have emails and phones and everything set up, thanks to the city staff of getting it all addressed over the last two weeks. We've kind of been working on this for the last two weeks to get it seamlessly transitioned today. Otherwise, any questions you have for me now or later?
Just to let people know, downstairs, where you go to the assessing office is, there is a phone. Patty is, of course, there and can answer a number, many of the questions. But if there are things that have to be dealt with directly by Alan's firm and his staff, people can call right there by simply, or for any time by, by really what was just extension, and it will automatically connect you to the right to city office. We also have an email address. I think it's cityassessing.mia.us, I believe. But something like that, but it's all down there, where you can email, and it will, again, go directly to Alan. And if you need to contact him, you can do that by phone to set up an appointment, if that is necessary. But in many cases, they'll be able to provide the answers, either by email or by phone, in most cases.
Thank you, Alan. And just to be clear on the resolution, this allows you to present us with dates later in the year that we'll do for the Board of Review. This isn't exact, this isn't setting new dates. It's just allowing you to offer us new dates, rather than...
Yes, the statute is provided that you have to meet on a specific date for July and December. This provides us that week, so we can meet Monday through Friday. So, it gives us flexibility, it gives council flexibility. If that specific Tuesday doesn't work, now we can do it. I'm going to propose a Thursday, a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, whether it's eight noon, we can be really flexible with that. So, that's with that resolution. It doesn't change anything, just gives us a wider window.
And you'll propose some dates to us at another time?
Probably tomorrow, yeah.
Oh, good. Probably got it ready? Okay, excellent. All right, well, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I didn't intend on reading the resolution, unless Bill insists that I do.
Oh, you don't have to note.
That's pretty much the summary right there of what it says. I move we approve Resolution 2018-03.
Walagora?
Hi.
Haas?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
And Noak?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next up, we have communications and petitions. This is a request to paint pickleball, I'm sorry, to paint permanent pickleball lines on the tennis, on one tennis court at the Bayview Park. Am I correct? And we have a guest who will give us a brief summary of what they're doing.
Yeah.
It's Ron, am I correct?
Ron Fazina. I live on 11th Avenue. And I'll try to get it in before you guys dong me, so I'll talk fast. I'm here today requesting the permission for the placement and painting of pickleball lines on one tennis court at Bayview Park. And by using one tennis court, we can actually get two pickleball courts on that. I will stress that this will not cost the city anything. We're going to do, provide all of the labor. We'll provide the paint and the methods and the nets and everything else we need to do to play pickleball there. And also, it won't in any way harm the court. We're not digging, placing poles, or doing anything. All of the nets that we do use to play pickleball are all temporary nets that we bring at the time that we do play. So, before I get into any specifics, you do all have in front of you, it's two-sided. One is what the dimensions of a pickleball court are. And then, the other side with the orange and the black is actually the placement of a pickleball court on a tennis court, one half of a tennis court, to be specific there. But I'll go over that a little bit later. But let me, at this time, just review the state of both tennis and pickleball here in town, or the courts. So, with respect to tennis, we have four outdoor courts. The high school, which are excellent, and great surface. They have wind screens. The next best place to play would be the junior high. Again, excellent surface, but no wind screens. And wind screens are important in Alpena. And then, I would say, the next place to play would be Bayview, which the courts are in a wonderful location. They, but if anybody that has gone down and really looked at the courts, there are a number of cracks on it. So, there really is not an ideal surface to play tennis on. People do play tennis on, yes, that's for sure. And they do have wind screens, so it makes it, it makes it a very good location. But currently, on Bayview, there's four tennis courts, and three of them have good nets. And the other tennis court has a net that you really couldn't play pickle, that you couldn't play tennis on because it's really in too much disrepair, as far as for that. And then, lastly, the other court that we have in town is McCray, McCray Park, which is the two courts. And there, they do not have any wind screens. The nets and the surface are actually in good condition because I think they were resurfaced a number of years ago. Now, talking about pickleball, the way pickleball is in town. I'm not sure if you guys know what pickleball is or not. It's actually one of the best, it is the fastest-growing sport in the United States right now. And it is played with a paddle. A lot of people describe it as a cross between tennis and ping pong, table tennis. And the part of it that I think is so appealing to everyone is that the skill level is not near the skill level or the physical activity that you would need to play tennis. So, it basically crosses all lines of age. So, if you go down and vacation in Florida, in the villages, over the winter time, I think you, that sound of pickleball probably would drive you nuts because there's so many people down there with the elderly population. But it is, it is extremely popular with the elderly. And I believe there, I'm not sure at this school, but they are actually teaching it in the schools now. And so, that's how the sport is played. It's easy to learn, it's very social. And now, our current state of pickleball in Alpena is we have no outdoor courts at all. I believe Hubbard Lake has an outdoor court. And the only place that we play, we play at the A-Plex. And that's great, A-Plex is wonderful. They charge us to play, that's fine. That's not the motivation why we want to have an outdoor court. They charge us $5, if you're a member, $7, if you're not. And we play on one, we have one tennis court that is lined for pickleball. But different than what I'm proposing, on that tennis court that we play at the A-Plex, they have actually, we have four pickleball courts on one tennis court. And as you can imagine, that gets relatively busy, but as far as in looking, in looking at the whole procedure. But it all works, and we all do it, as far as for there. But that is where we play. And I believe the amount of people that play are probably well over seventy-five people that play pickleball routinely there. And we do play year-round. So, so then, knowing that, then I will actually give a little bit of, if, I've been a tennis player since I moved here in 1986, so well over thirty years. And I would present the tennis side of this, which is if the tennis players sort of, they are possessive of their tennis courts. So, they probably are not necessarily the biggest fans of anybody adulterating their tennis courts, drawing lines or whatever. So, I only say that to give you a dissenting argument that a tennis player would make. And again, our proposal and what we're doing, it's just lines. And I'll show you a little bit later, when we get to the diagram, that we'll try to be as less intrusive to that tennis court as possible. So, just so you know, the tennis players are not necessarily the happiest, even though I'm a tennis player, been playing for all these years. I love the sport. It's so much more fun than doubles tennis. I love singles tennis a lot, but it's just a great social sport in order to do it. My motivation for this is really, you know, selfish motivation because I love the sport, and also to actually promote the sport. And that's why choosing Bayview as the venue, I don't know of any other greater place in order to play. I wish the Bayview tennis courts were in better shape because there is no better place. So, being in Bayview, we would have a high visibility of people that would be coming through town and seeing us play. And to me, that is a way that we can even grow the sport in Alpena. Because selfishly, the more people that we have playing the sport, who want to play the sport, the more people that put money into the A-Plex at $5 and $7 a pop. And that's all good, because that facility is just, it's a wonderful facility in so many levels. And again, personally, by playing tennis and pickleball there year-round. Then, lastly, to try to be brief, just to go over the proposal that I gave, is you can see on this, this, the one side is the dimensions of a pickleball court, which is approximately twenty by forty-four feet in total. And then, when we reverse it over, then we have our proposal in order to, of how we will place the pickleball court on this tennis court. And actually, the issue that tennis players have with the placing pickleball lines on a tennis court is that they really make it busy with respect to calling service, serves in or balls that are close to the side in or out, because it becomes so busy. And if you would go to the A-Plex, you would see what busy actually is. And, but here, being able to, we are able to use some of the lines of the tennis and incorporate them into, use as pickleball dividing lines. And so, I've tried, or we have tried to make it as least painful as possible to anybody that would play on that tennis court. And each one of those squares is actually one foot. And so, as you can see from the sidelines of tennis, it would be three feet away, which is plenty of space. And then, and then any other line, as you can see, does not even come close to really being that busy. That would affect anything. Where you see the net there, that is not a line. That's just an indication where the net will be placed. So, there is no line there. Again, we use, we try to incorporate everything that the existing tennis court would allow. And the lines that we propose to paint are not thick like a tennis line, which would be two and a half inches or so. Usually, they're probably an inch, an inch? Okay. So, so small, an inch and a half to two inches. So, smaller than what would be a tennis line. And so, and then what we would also do there, since I alluded before that there are three out of the four tennis nets at Bayview are good, one is bad, we would actually move the bad tennis court, we can do that, bad tennis court to the pickleball court. And if the city ever replaces it, then, then it's a better net there. But as of right now, it would be sort of impossible to play. So, we would make that court into the court that if anybody would play tennis, it just wouldn't make a lot of sense in order to play with it at this particular point. So, and the court we would choose would be the court closest to the basketball, basketball hoops, as far as there, so...
The lines won't be white. They'll be, they'll be a color that'll blend in fairly well with the original court color. So, it's not like you're having a whole bunch of white lines out there.
So, that is our proposal to do it. Again, it shouldn't, wouldn't cost the city anything. We plan on doing all of the work, buying the paint, doing all of that. When we play, we would bring the nets over. Whoever would play, then they could bring the nets over. So, instead of playing tennis there on that court, they would be able to play pickleball on that court, and we would have the capabilities of doing too. Now, ultimately, I would love for that thing to go so big, and then you guys go by it all the time, and you see that we have all these people playing pickleball. And then, one day, then we have the, bring up the proposal of having a permanent pickleball court somewhere in order to do that. Because that is just, that's a whole different order of fun. I just played in those in, outside in Potaski. And again, it's just so much nicer in order to have one court that's dedicated. Plus, we wouldn't, if you had a permanent pickleball court, you wouldn't have to bring the net to and from the whole time, which we would have to do now, as far as that, so...
All right. Thank you, Ron. I don't think anybody's got any questions. I have two, and they answered them right there at the end. Proposing that... Pardon? Do I say it out there? Doesn't look like anyone's got any questions, so I don't think that's necessary. Going to hear from the tennis players, pretty much. I, the one question I did have was maybe for Bill. As far as sometimes we have park ordinances that say what you can and can't do at certain parks, like bike parks, you can't do skateboards or vice versa. Is anyone aware of, before we have any further discussion, is whether there's an ordinance that says you can't do anything but play tennis at a tennis court?
Not that I'm aware of.
No.
In the event, I guess if there is, and this gets passed, we could maybe just make sure. The only thing I could see is that I probably will hear from some, from some tennis players, but, but there again, it doesn't look like it's going to be a huge issue.
I've seen over the past years that pickleball's been growing, and if you get more people active, more people out in the community, and I am a tennis player... active, more people out in the community, and, and I am a tennis player, I've played lately as much, but I have been most of my life, and I appreciate anybody getting out. And like I said, it can be a lifelong sport with tennis, but pickleball even more so, so.
I'll just say to you, I live, I am frequently close to the park. And I don't know that this year so far, I've seen more than once or twice somebody playing tennis. And it tends to be that way the whole summer. It just isn't that heavily used. That we can't share. They shouldn't be able to share those courts.
Maybe I'm wrong there.
Yeah. Oh, you may, I'm sure they'll complain, but, but you know, there's there.
I might add about, I, because I am an active tennis player also, that our, our areas
that we play are primarily the high school or the, the high school is just an excellent court. So, and the only time that we would go to Bayview would be with unusual circumstances.
Okay.
So just so you know, the general tennis community plays.
And the others. Okay. Thank you.
I think so. I move we approve the request to paint pickleball lines down at the Bayview tennis courts. I present.
Second.
And that comes from a tennis player.
Tess?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noak?
Yes.
And Wollagora?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Ron. Next up is the truck route modification on Long Lake Avenue.
Mr. Mayor and Council, before we proceed, I would like to abstain from discussion and vote on this. There is a business located along Long Lake Avenue that is affiliated with my core employer. I received an opinion from the city attorney, so I would like to abstain from that discussion and vote please.
So your employer owns a business on that route?
Yes, sir.
And your final?
I agree.
I move that we, that I abstain from the discussion and vote.
Second.
What are you ready?
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Wollagora?
Aye.
And Haas?
Yes.
Motion carried.
May sit out. Anyone from the staff was, do any, any further presentation than we had before? For those that weren't here, I suppose you could review the maps and things that were on our last presentation at our last meeting on our YouTube video. Basically talking about modifying the truck route and adding single, do you want to describe that for me, Rich?
Actually, we've got a map.
Allow only single unit trucks, concrete trucks, dump trucks with no trailers, flatbed trucks, et cetera, to travel this route right there. So it would be, it would end up being what we call the secondary, part of the secondary route. You can see, you don't have to go in too far, Rich, I guess. You can kind of see the, when it's out a little bit, where the rest of the truck is as far as associated with the trunk line, and then secondary, and then the red line is primary. So this would be part of what you call secondary. Would that be correct?
Yes.
We've had, we've had quite a few presentations at our public input session last week from both the truckers and the residents on that, on or in the area of the proposed modification. Personally, it's definitely one of those decisions that's not going to be favorable for one or the other party. I think we all knew that going into it. We tried significantly to get a bypass in from Elm, which would be, from Elm over to Johnson, or I think it's Miller at that area, but that basically just kind of fell through due to funding. That would have cut off, basically done the same thing, but cut off the entire residential area. So, you know, I'm always, always encouraging the staff and everyone else involved to try and make that work at some point. The, the trucking and business community were very good at that time by offering to donate a lot of materials and, and work. But unfortunately, there was issues with the state as far as allowing both volunteer, I'll just call it volunteer work and materials for lack of better terms, but mixing that with any kind of grant that we would have gotten from the state was, wasn't going to work with those. So that was my second pitch today to, for people to, to talk to the state about some of their rules that they've mandated. But needless to say, that's, it's definitely still a focus. Talked to a couple of truckers, just, and this is a little bit, this has a little bit to do with it. As far as the corner of 23 and, and Hamilton Road that's just off of your map, that's been a focus of where those trucks have to go if they want to come, if they can't come through this modification that we're talking about, and they want to come to other parts of the community, even on the north side, would be to come either the back way over where the red line is or up around 23. And that, that corner at 23 and Hamilton has become significantly more difficult for them to take that left because there's no light there, and with the traffic coming over that hill, the speed limit is still 55, and I've done it quite a few times myself, that it's, it could take, it takes sometimes forever waiting for a truck, or what seems like forever to take a left there, to come out of there. And then they take the shot and sometimes pull over onto the curb to let the car that's coming go by. But so there's, so really, there's a lot of issues that we're talking about. Quite possibly, along with this modification would be to alleviate some of that danger at that corner. Maybe not as significant to the residents that are on, on that area. And, and I don't want to go on forever, but I, I gotta make sure that everybody understands that I completely understand and have sympathy for both parties. I really do. Some of my concern with some of the comments from the residents are, and I get it, but, but as far as, as far as the residents that are on that road, as far as us coming personally and asking them for their input, it would almost be, I compare it a little bit to asking everyone that's on 11th as well. And, and I hear from the residents on 11th on a, on occasion, and I hear from the residents on Long Rapids Road that are there just before the Duck Park occasionally from, you know, issues with the trucks going by there. And so being on a, you know, on an approved truck route, or a route where a lot of trucks goes, it, it's, it's, sometimes it's part of industry, it's part of what you have to do to accommodate, you know, what needs to be done as far as what those trucks are hauling. A couple of the residents pointed out, and then just today, Ron, thank you for coming, pointed out Shalas. From my perspective, and I could be corrected by Officer Hamp, maybe at some other time if I'm wrong, but the way I read the ordinance, if Shalas, if there's work to be done in Shalas, the way that it, that it's written right now, yes, those businesses have got to go all the way around. Because the ordinance says that in order to deliver to, to a business that's not on the truck route, you have to exit the truck route at the nearest point to that business or residence. And then dump your load or do what you got to do, and then get back on at the nearest place. And the nearest place is just outside the circle on the corner of Walnut and 9th. And so by law, he does have to go all the way around, seven miles each way to deliver to Shalas, which is really physically only what looks like maybe six, eight blocks from where he's starting. So that's, that's kind of my pitch of sympathy with not only the truckers, I mean, we talk about trucking companies, but we're also talking who they're delivering to. They're delivering to somebody that's going to have to pay for that because it's not free. So we're talking about other residents who I also have sympathy for, are having to pay the extra fuel cost for them to go all the way around. And my last point would be that I just, I, the way we have it right now just doesn't make a lot of sense to me. I do want an answer. I want something better. My, my thought right now would be, for those that are opposed to it, would be to possibly consider a season worth of, of this, the way we did with, the way we did with the snowmobile traffic, to offer a season of the proposed modification unless everybody's in favor of doing the whole thing, but, you know, permanently. But my proposal, if you're, if you're adamant about not doing it, is to at least try it and have us monitor it. I've talked to Joel a little bit about, about monitoring it, once it's implemented, to make sure that people understand what can and can't go down that road and, and the speeds and things of that nature. So that's pretty much my pitch and where I'm at. And I'll open it up to discussion on any of the council members as well. If we want to just go right down, I'm, I'm almost assuming that everyone will have something to say.
You want me to do next?
If you like.
Okay. This is a difficult decision because somebody won't be happy. I completely understand what the residents are saying. I, it's, if we allow this, it's going to get noisy in your neighborhood. I completely understand what the, what the people who offer the services, that who have to go all the way around are saying. And there isn't an easy answer. I wish sometimes that maybe, and I know, Ron, because I, and I did read the transportation report that you had quoted last time, it's an old report. When they did that one, the college kind of backed out of that and wouldn't allow them to cut through that property. So it's really not, it's really not relevant in the conversation today. I still wish we could find another way. But I'm not sure what that is. I'm really not sure what that is.
I just assume we didn't. I don't, I mean.
I'm going to listen to what everyone else has to say about this. I, I, I'm not opposed to what the mayor says about trying this for a short period of time and seeing how it works. But I would like to hear the opinion of my colleagues at this point.
And I'm going to stick my neck out and say, this is an industrial town. This is a business town. We are dependent on, on that. It has been and probably always will be that way. We all have to survive one way or another. At the same time, this is a beautiful, beautiful place to live, and I want everybody who lives here to have the same feeling of gratitude that I have because I get to live here. Do trucks come by my house every single day? Every day? And I lived through it. I manage. We do manage. Every now and then I look at a crack here and there, and I think, I wonder what caused that crack? But, but let's be real here. We are dependent on trucking. We are dependent on resources coming to us rather than us creating our own resources. It is impossible for us to do that. So in my mind, the best thing to do is to figure out some way to get along about it. Everybody has to give a little or a lot. But that is what Alpena is, is what it's founded on.
Michael? Anything? Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. That's pretty good. Good at that.
Excellent input. My thoughts on this, I definitely appreciate where the businesses, specifically owners coming from, their request, and the other businesses that have spoke up to request the modification as well. It definitely affects fuel costs and other costs that they incur. There are also businesses, and this has been in place for 20 years, and these businesses have all been there for 20 years and are continuing to be there, and have found a way to make it work so far. I have some serious concerns about, for the residents on that street. I know there are other residential neighborhoods on some of the truck route streets. I've driven them all, and, and most of them are wider significantly than Long Lake Avenue is in this area. Most have wider city right of ways. And most of the homes on most of the streets that are part of the route are set back further from the road than they are on Long Lake Avenue. We know the closer you are to the road, the more impact it has, both on safety, noise, a lot of factors. And so it's something I did look at. There are quite a few businesses that would impact right of way, being able to use this route, and it would make sense to do so. This could be a huge influx of traffic down this very quiet, currently quiet residential street. And there's a lot of room for more businesses to go into Commerce Park, a lot. There's a lot of land back there. And so looking at the future impact, both current and future, I think that we have to look at the, the concerns of the citizens, and it's who we represent specifically, and safety issues even. The, right now, the regulations, it talks about 7:00 a.m., 7:00 p.m. Well, that's when we live our lives. That's when kids are waiting for the school bus, that's when kids are going back and forth to school, walking, that's when people are going to work. Not everyone works first shift, so a lot of people are trying, whether they're retired or disabled, they're home all day. They may wait, my husband works third shift, we don't live on that road, but his daytime, or his sleep time is the daytime. So saying that just, they're limiting it to half the day, to me, doesn't address the concerns about the, um, serious impact on this street. For 20 years, that has been established as a non-truck route. People have bought homes there with that expectation. People, I was driving down there today, two sold signs were on houses. And I'm guessing that when people bought those houses in the past month or so, they weren't expecting it to be part of a truck route, probably, because this has just kind of come up. So those are my concerns that I'm looking at. And I understand the motivation. Like I said, it's been working for 20 years, so, and it was put in place and set up this way for a reason, and perhaps that reason still stands.
Michael? Anything? I'm sorry.
I do want to add that I think looking at other things to make things safer, or other, continuing to look for other options than this should always be actually pursued. Perhaps we need a stoplight at Hamilton to make it safer. And I know that's not our, our area, but there are other options besides just putting this through. And I just want to put that.
Yeah, I agree. And that was part of what I had to say is that I certainly, I, I don't think we've stopped looking for an alternative. Mr. Rose was in here last meeting and talked about an alternative that wasn't even the same as the one that we're, we were considering last, so I can certainly appreciate that. I think we're going to continue to look for one. Again, I'm in favor of, of the, the proposed modification to, to the extent of, of allowing it for at least a minimum of a season, if not permanently, but until a new alternative can be found. The way it's structured is on the outskirts, the same as the outskirts of the major community like 11th is, Bagley is. So it's in keeping with what we have. And probably my bigger, I guess my bigger answer, and this isn't, this is just reality, okay? This isn't, I'm not advocating for anything whatsoever, but the reality is that the trucks are already going down that route. We've only got so many, so many officers to, to, to keep an eye on it. And most of the residents that came and spoke at our last meeting, we were all here, saying that those, that they're there and we're not enforcing it. And it's, I think it's difficult to, to enforce it. And like, I guess my hope would be, like we did with the snowmobile trail, that it, it really didn't get worse. I got very few, as a matter of fact, that was a two or maybe two or three year proposal, and there weren't, there weren't any, there weren't really any changes to how, to what people had expected. And I don't, it's been almost six years now, and I don't think anyone's ever been in here since I've been in here to complain about them, so. So I'll go on the, I'll go on the fact that the fears of it being worse than it already is will be possibly unfounded. And if they are, then we actually have the authority to, to change it on a meeting's notice, to be honest with you. Pretty much most of the decisions we make here can be reversed by, by someone at any particular time, so. So if anyone would like to make a motion one way or the other? I guess it would have to be, we don't really make motions not to do things, so if somebody wants to make a motion to modify the truck route, I'll entertain that. See where it lands? I'd like to take some kind of action on it. So let's, how about if I propose this? Let's propose that we, that we, that we, and I modify the truck route for a one season So let's, how about if I propose this? Let's propose that we, that we, that we, and I modify the truck route for a one-season test period, and, and then, and then we'll vote, just so we can vote and take action on it.
Okay. I like the motion that we modify the truck route for one season. I would like to add that we can bring it back at any time if it's not working.
I believe we can, just out of default, because we're, that's what we do. I don't, we don't have, I don't think that has to be part of the motion.
Anybody can bring it back up after the regulations. No.
Okay. So modify the truck route for one season. One season is defined as?
Tell them.
What is the season defined as? So that, Rich, would you have an answer to that?
I, I think you probably run it up through December 1st.
From when?
From now.
So it would be from now till December 1st?
They stop hauling in the winter, for the most part. Except for the, the gas companies and some other.
I also think we need to clearly state, very clearly, what that modification will be.
I believe it would be.
Yeah, Rich had done that, that it would be.
It's in the purchase memo.
I mean, again, reiterate, re-clearly restate what that modification will be.
So it says, says about it.
Modification would only allow single-unit trucks, concrete trucks, dump trucks with no trailers, flatbed trucks, et cetera, to travel this route. This would restrict gravel trains and semi-truck and trailers from using the route. So they would be ahead of you.
Now, if, now just to be clear, because Rich had mentioned at our last meeting that a dump truck required to haul a.
Piece of equipment.
A piece of equipment behind it.
Certain equipment.
But this says no trailers, so how do we want to?
But, I mean, if you, if you've got to haul a bulldozer to a site on there, you've, you've got to have a big enough vehicle to haul it. That may require a dump truck to haul it to get it to the site.
Correct.
Doesn't mean drive up and down it, back and forth, be going to a site specific to there.
They're going to be.
Good, good one is BT Energy's contract. They haul it back around on a trailer behind a dump truck. You know, if they're working in that area, they obviously need to go down that road.
Right. Thunder Bay Electric does it. Any electric company does it. Some of these guys do it, so. So when you say no tra, I, I just, when are you going to, because somebody's going to write this out?
The intention would be is that, you know, a semi-cab and, and trailer type scenario is not what we're allowing. At least, obviously, if somebody's working on there, they have to get access to it. And, you know, but it's really geared towards allowing the garbage trucks, the dump trucks, single-unit vehicles, delivery vehicles, you know, to, to travel, traverse that section.
Okay. That's understandable?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Sorry. I usually just do that. Okay, so that's, are you fine with that, as your motion?
Yes, with what Greg had brought.
Yeah, what he says.
As presented.
And then the other was, he did add that you could look at the time. He said 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM could be whatever you want, as far as a limit during the day.
Can I make one suggestion legally? For enforcement purposes, the more specific it is, the better, so that we're not arguing about what you meant or what you didn't mean.
Right.
So if, if the motion is to do it for a season, we need to define when then, when's that season? If it's December 1st, then it's December 1st. If it's January, whatever you guys want to do. But I think we should specifically have that language in there. And also, if you're going to put the time limit on it, that that specifically be in the motion as well.
I would just, if I were you, I would just strike the word "season" and just put in from now until December 1st.
Are we ready? So as written, the route as written in the memo, to modify the truck route till December 1st from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
When is the end time modified, when, from when to when?
From now until December.
December.
Now until December.
Now until December 1st.
Does that work, though?
It does. And then, you know, you can, I guess, well, it'd be separate, but I'm assuming you probably want staff to report sometime around the 1st of December, whether it worked, whether, you know, what complaints there were, whether there were any complaints at all. And then you could consider a further extension of it at that time if you felt it was appropriate.
Got that in?
Sure. And you want that end with this motion or separate?
Just an understanding that that's what you want us to do, is staff.
And just that, and staff will make the report at the first meeting following the 1st of December, in terms of the impact of the, of the change.
Thank you. So I need a second.
Okay. A second, send this motion so we can vote. I will. Second.
Nielsen?
No.
Walagora?
Aye.
Husb?
No.
And Johnson?
No.
Okay.
Motion denied.
All right.
Yeah, when I'm back.
Coming, Michael's back. Next up is the Alpena Adventures kayak rental. Paul's going to present again briefly, please.
Good evening. This is Paul LeBrecq from the 2961 Road, Alpena. I have a charter business at the City Marina. People snorkeling, whatnot, diving. I want to be able to put some kayaks and paddle boats, do down there for, give people something else to do. I didn't make the Harbor Advisory Committee meeting like Danny did. They gave us approval.
I'll just tell. You know, you tabled it, the way to what's, what the Harbor Advisory Committee said. So at that meeting, they weighed out all the options of what was presented. And so what they gave permission for was for six watercraft, non-motorized canoe, kayak or paddle boats, a number of six floating in the water, tied to a boat, as long as he at least got the minimum requirements required by the state for the business that he was operating in. And so that, that's what they approved, that's, that's the basis.
Okay.
But I didn't go over above that state minimum, and I did provide Mr. Sudden with the million-dollar liability policy that they were asking for. So that is in place now. I'm just waiting for the okay.
Yeah. It sounded great. I liked your, I liked the proposal. I like what you're doing. I'm glad that the advisory committee met and got that worked out with what you'll be doing. I don't, I didn't have any issues other than meeting the insurance requirements, which are, are now met. There was also, I think Greg informed us with the, with the rate fee that we've put in place for Erin when she was down at the duck park, with hers was $100 a month, if I'm correct.
And also for Casey is, well.
Oh, Casey is down there now.
Stutzman. But he took over and he also heard.
So should you say that the practice of someone doing a business similar to that in a, in a similar park, city property, is $100 a month? And, and I don't know, you would, you, had you asked, you're asking officially for a waiver of that fee?
I was asking for a waiver of the fee. There's really no parity in what, what I'm doing compared to Casey at the duck park. I don't have handicap kayak launch. I don't have a place to put a building. I don't have porta potties, handicap one that's there now and a regular one. So this is really, I don't see parity there. I'm using the dock that I rent. According to my insurance guy, seeing some steps on that dock, it's, you know, my insurance covers them no matter what. As far as a little sign, you know, I've been told by the Harbor Advisory Council I could have a small little banner stuck in the rocks, you know?
Is there a, and that, that's the advisory committees, is there, is there a sign that they have out that says, how they're going to, who's going to regulate that or who, who's the authority on the sign? Just, Don, just so we all know for sure.
Well, I, I would regulate it. There really aren't any signs at the boat harbor for businesses, because there aren't any businesses. There's a few charter boats. They don't stay here all year. Most of them leave. Larry Sanderson was the one that always stayed in Alpena. And so we let him put up, you know, two of those metal stakes in the rock so they're not on the shore interfering with the sidewalk and, you know, had a banner about this long, about this, but just one of those blind types, like you see on fences and beer stores and stuff. So Paul would be allowed to have something like that, that's, you know, the name of his business.
Okay. And, and the reason why I bring it up, and you brought it up, and even though you don't want me to compare you to the duck park business, they have, they have the flag things out now. There's like four of them right up by the road. I, I personally, unless it's incredibly intrusive or gaudy or something, I'm, I guess in favor of, of at least people knowing that he's down there. So I don't know if they can, he can, if he's even asking for anything other than.
You can put it somewhere else?
Yeah.
Instead of rate raising on the dock?
Yeah.
That'd be a violation of our doing, or that'd be an off-site accessory sign.
Of course it would. That's what I was going to say. So you're not looking for walking traffic? People are going to know from your website and barochers and things that you're down there.
No, actually.
Facebook and media and social.
You know, probably, probably a thousand people a day walk the, the pier.
Okay, right down to the pier.
Once again, this thing, this whole, this whole thing was an add-on to my, to my program. Basically, it was people coming to my boat, getting on my boat, reloading kayaks in my dinghy in my boat, taking them up Thunder Bay Island, people snorkeling, diving. So this is like an afterthought.
Okay.
Some, actually Jeff Gray said it'd be kind of cool to have something down there for people to do, you know? People are staying hotel here, they're walking around. I mean, the whole idea is to keep people in the city all day, spend money, you know?
And Mr. Mayor, his business grew in two years, three years, you know, it's a great success, and he wanted to rent more docks. Then he could always go to the zoning board and look for a variance, similar to Apex got, put on a business property.
Okay.
Because of the distance down to the drive.
Okay.
So there's always a.
Yeah, just kind of feeling it out, you know?
Okay.
When I first started, I wanted to put three kayaks there, four kayaks, a paddle boat for older people that don't want to get in a kayak, you know? I mean, a lot of people are like, oh my gosh, I'm not getting in a kayak, you know? But a paddle boat, you know, to, to, you know, elderly people can get in a paddle boat, can paddle around and go down by the, by the museum and the bridge and just give them something to do.
Okay. Greg, a question for you. The $100 fee that we have, is that for any business operating in any city property? We pretty much do that for, regardless of kayak rentals and this, but are there other businesses that we waive that fee, or has there been any precedent set on that?
Well, that, we have waived, not that I am aware of, for the vendors, like the food vendors, they pay a, a fee to operate within our city parks around city property. And the only other one would be the kayak canoe rentals. And then, of course, we rent the warming shelter, the former warming shelter down in Michikiras, and that is on a, you know, monthly basis, and they pay rent on that, which is considerably more than $100 a month. But they do, so everything is leased under a contract with a fee of some sort. But we've been consistent on the ones as far as with the rental of kayaks and boats, if it's off of our property of, of the $100 a month. Now, what we did do when it was initially done for Erin Riafella was that it was a new business and didn't know, you know, in terms of how that business was going to take off. It was always usually struggles at the beginning, so it was $100 a month, but we told her, Rich basically had that in the contract, that if there was, you know, if it was creating a difficulty, financial difficulty, as she was getting the, the business up and running, they could come back to us and we would look at the, you know, at possibly lowering that $100 a month. That was never done by her at any time while she was operating, nor has it been done by Casey Stutzman either.
Yeah, I guess for myself, one of the things that I would like to consider rather than us waiving a fee and setting a precedent is just to allow staff to continue to do, you know, to work with the new employees and, you know, new businesses here in town, rather than permanently. I'd rather see that because they do the day-to-day operations. And, you know, I've heard that from, from Erin in the past as well, that they were willing to work with her. She didn't need it because the business took off well, but that was the thing that created what she considered to be a pretty strong environment for, you know, starting a business down in that area.
What Rich and I had talked about this morning was to basically do that same thing. Yes, have the $100 a month fee, but let it be reviewed after two months based upon how the business goes, how many rentals you have, so forth. And if it warranted a reduction, then we could do that.
My thoughts.
I guess more than anything else, I have a question about the area that people will be allowed to take, to take whatever it is they rent. Where, where exactly will they be able to go?
Anywhere where there's water. Anywhere where there's water in the, around the marina, up the river, down where we paddle, paddle, that far, it's, it's a long way. You know, down by Ninth Street Dam, you know, depending on the current, usually in the summertime, it's pretty much shut down.
Right.
You know, super shallow boats, so they can go anywhere pretty much. Maybe take a kayak into the lake, it's always likely to be in big waves. You know, people might want to try that.
And you have a rescue boat, do you?
Oh, yeah. You know, I felt some, no, I could want to kind of, kind of touch on what you were saying a little bit. Like this, the dock that I rent is the dock, the dock that I rent now, currently for $1,400 a season, is the dock that people are going to walk on, is the dock that people are going to get off that dock into these, into these kayaks and boats and whatnot, and off they That's why I kind of have a little problem with this $100, especially like right now, you know, getting started. I mean, each penny so counts. I mean, I bought 30 kayaks, I have a $30,000 boat, $6,000 bus. I mean, it's just money, money, money. So each, each penny really, really counts at this point. I mean, sure, if it takes off down there like crazy, I have no problem paying $100 for anything. But, you know, starting out, it's pretty tough. Once again, it was an add-on. So it's just an idea to give people that are downtown visiting something to do.
Argument being that you're already renting this lot.
Yeah, yeah, this would be my fourth year.
So if we want to, I guess there's basically two, two things. Again, one would be to allow Oliver Breck to operate his Alpena Adventures kayak rental out of the harbor as stated and approved by.
No, I'm all right. It's watercraft.
Watercraft, watercraft, it's just kayak.
I know, it's the wording, it's kind of, a little concerned about that.
Allow him to operate as he's presented. And, and then the second one, and then possibly a second motion to either waiver, to waive the fee if somebody.
$100.
If somebody is so inclined.
Can I ask an opinion of the harbor master?
I wouldn't say anything, but you're, I, I look at it like this. I know we have a policy about the $100 rental talks. And you've heard Mr. LeBrecq say that he's already renting the dock. So to me, it's kind of like, we have charter boats down there that take people fishing. So they're running a business at that dock that they rent. Or they're not even renting a dock, and they're charter boats, like there's Chumboka and Guy on the North Side, a couple of the Walleye guys that take people up chartering, and all they do is just launch. And all their customers that pay, you know, like a charter boat to go for a half a day
already renting the dock. So to me, it's kinda like, we have charter boats down there that take people up fishing, so they're running the business at that dock that they rent, or they're not even renting a dock, and they're charter boats, like there's Chum Baca and Guy on the North Side, a couple of the Walleye guys that take people up chartering, and all they do is just launch, and all their customers, they, you know, like a charter boat to go for a half a day with four people's four hundred bucks, three fifty, four hundred dollars, they don't pay anything, they're either paying a fifty dollar sticker on their trailer, or they're renting their dock space, and then they're doing what the, as, as they will. At the time, I, when I talked to the harbor advisory committee, I didn't even think about that they, he would have to pay the hundred bucks because of the park, you know, the policy on the parks, so I didn't approach that with the harbor advisory committee, but if I had, they would've said they didn't care, because they're, you know, two of them do charter boats, so, and they don't pay the money, so ultimately, it's up to you guys, but that would be a parity I would see with the fishing charter boat, you know.
So the hundred dollars is a yearly fee?
It's a monthly fee.
A monthly fee?
Mm-hmm. Thank you, Don. Let's do the, let's try for the approval on the business itself first, if someone would, please.
I move we approve the business as presented by Paul LeBrecq for kayak rental.
Seth's not the part.
She is quick.
Non-motorized watercraft. It's not just kayaks.
Non-motorized watercraft. Thank you.
And that was for six of them? That's what the harbor advisory wanted, Bruce?
Six. Thank you.
Okay, Noak?
Yes.
Walagora?
Aye.
Hess?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And Nielsen?
Yes.
Motion carried.
And if someone is so inclined to waive the hundred dollar a month fee?
I move we approve the, you know, waive the fee, and can we do that for a certain period, to be reviewed after one year?
Second.
What are we reviewing?
I'm gonna review the hundred dollar fee and where sales are and stuff, is what I'm, in my mind, if that's.
So, I just wanted to clarify.
Sure.
We're waiving it just for a period of time, or are we waiving it because he falls under the same category as the charter fishery?
Yeah, I don't see the sense in the, in the timeframe.
Yeah, that's true.
I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say that I just don't, I, I think, I think you've made a good point.
Yes.
The business is different, he's doing business off of the pier the same as the other charters are that have the flip.
Yep. Okay, yep. Let me rescind that first one and give you this one. I move we waive the fee for Paul LeBrecq, so, non-motorized.
And I would settle that.
Walagora?
Aye.
Hess?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
And Noak?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Paul, good luck. Thank you. Next up is the second reading and council action on ordinance number eighteen dash four forty, rezoned property located at two twelve South Eaton Avenue.
I'm not sure if there are any questions for Adam, he reported last time that Mr. Smith wishes this to be rezoned, and I don't believe there are any corrections to the first reading, so I simply need a vote up or down, unless you want me to read it again.
No, he didn't, he made the favor earlier, so. That'll just need a motion.
Prove the rezon.
An ordinance that.
Yeah. The rezon, somebody else do it, I don't think.
I move we rezon Brad Smith property at ten sixty-five, bottom of that trail.
No, no, that's his address.
Two twelve south.
Two twelve south.
Oh yeah, same, this is bad, two twelve.
Southbound.
Oh, southbound, I'm sorry, from R two to R T.
I second that.
Hess?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noak?
Yes.
And Walagora?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next up, new business bids, US twenty-three North Property Access Road and Utilities, Rich?
On May twenty-ninth, city received an open bid for US twenty-three North Property Access Road and Utilities Project. This project includes installation of water sewer utilities, excavation and installation of subbase, curb and gutter, HMA paving, and slope restoration. This road is being constructed at this time to provide the initial access to the US twenty-three North property in agreement with the MDEQ permit, wetlands permit issued in March of two thousand sixteen. Permit was issued to grant access to the property across non-regulated wetlands. Bid documents were sent to various firms and plan rooms, with one bid received as listed below. MacArthur Construction out of Hillman, the AS red was three ninety-five, seven seventy-ten, as tabulated was three ninety-eight, one twenty-two-ten. Funding has been established in the water sewer and street funds for this project. The AS tabulated prices are below the engineer's estimate, and also below the budgeted funding for the project. It's my recommendation as city engineer that the project be awarded to MacArthur Construction for the AS tabulated bid unit prices totaling three hundred ninety-eight thousand, one hundred twenty-two dollars and ten cents.
Hey, my only question is, is how much under are we? I shouldn't say that.
Engineer's estimate was four hundred and nine thousand.
Okay.
We have four hundred and ninety-one thousand budgeted.
Four hundred and ninety-one thousand?
Yeah.
And was there any contact made with some of the other construction companies on this particular project as to why they weren't bid, was it a timeline thing, was it the nature of the bid going out at a certain timeframe?
You know, and, and I can't answer that, because we opened up the completion date on this project to June thirtieth of two thousand nineteen. We, we did that on purpose to allow the others to, the opportunity to bid. I know that, my understanding is that Albers Green Dozer, Hillman, they've shifted most of their crews over to the other side of the state because they've got so much work lined up over there. We, we were under the impression that environmental contracting was gonna bid this, he's a fairly small contractor, very limited crew, but we were under the understanding that he indicated that he was gonna bid it, we were quite surprised when he actually didn't bid it, but we did not follow up with him.
Okay. Is there, and, and not to put you down the spot, any, any other firms that would have, be able to do this in southern part of the state of Michigan, or would just the distance probably?
There's some, there's one, Eminem out of Gaylord that could do this, we made sure, we, we sent it to them so that they were aware of it. We've tried to hit those in northern Michigan, because we've had limited success in getting multiple bidders on our project.
Okay. Thank you, Rich. I have no questions, anyone else?
I get to have all the time, okay. I move we approve the project of MacArthur Construction for the AS tabulated bid of three hundred ninety-eight, one twenty-two, and ten cents.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noak?
Yes.
Walagora?
Aye.
And Hess?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, next up is a property insurance appraisal.
Okay. Well, my presentation is gonna sound exactly like Rich's, because I borrowed his template, it even says engineering up the right corner, which I just noticed. Anyway, so in the fall, we're gonna be going out for insurance bids, and the first step in that process is to get an appraisal done of all the city property. So on May twenty-ninth, the city received an open bids, oops, it's the same, because I'm reading his memo.
No wonder it looks so, sounds so familiar.
All right, start us again. On May twenty-ninth, the city received an open bids for the property insurance appraisal. The project entails hiring a company to conduct an onsite inspection and create a certified appraisal of city-owned properties for the purpose of establishing current insurance valuation. The request for proposals was sent to various appraisal companies, and we received three bids. The first one was from HCA Asset Management out of Milwaukee, Wisconsin, for a bid of sixteen thousand five hundred, with an annual update service of fifteen hundred dollars a year. The second bid was from Asset Works LLC, which is in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, with a bid of eleven thousand seven hundred ninety-five dollars and six hundred and fifty dollars per year for the annual update service. The third bid was from Duffin Phelps, they're the same company that did our appraisal back in two thousand and five, but at that time, they were known as American Appraisal. They're out of Lisle, Illinois, and their bid was twenty-one thousand five hundred, with one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars for the update service. Our original estimate for the project was fifteen thousand dollars, so it's my recommendation that the project be awarded to Asset Works LLC for the bid price of eleven thousand seven hundred ninety-five dollars and the annual update of six hundred and fifty dollars. In order to complete the project, Asset Works is gonna send out an appraiser, and they're gonna stay for a week, and then, yeah, they estimate about a week, and the final report will be in our hands September fourteenth.
I guess, Anna, my, my question on that too, is when they do the annual report, do you know, is that more formula-based, or is somebody back in here taking a look for any additions, are they accounting on staff to be able to, you know, provide them with information as far as what updates have been?
They are planning on working closely with staff, they're gonna have a project meeting in the beginning. As far as how their report goes, I'm not really sure what the standards are used.
It's not about the update. I think you're not about the.
Oh, the update?
The updates, yes.
Okay. Yes, they will be working with staff on that, and I don't think they're gonna actually come here to do it, they're just gonna rely on the information that we give to them.
Okay. For six hundred and fifty dollars, I think they're saying.
Why is there such a disparity in the cost?
I don't know.
Is it, can you think of any good reason why more money would be better, do a better job, or, I don't understand why there's that big a disparity.
I read through the proposals, and I couldn't find any reason why there would be more. I was kinda shocked, especially coming from Duffin Phelps, who did the last one.
Sometimes it could depend on how busy they are, that fine, we'll put in a proposal at this price, if we get it, great, but if we don't, you know, they're busy enough, and that will happen sometimes with bidders or on any, whatever the project is, I've seen that in the past.
Thank you. I had actually contacted a couple of insurance companies, I contacted Alpena Agency, and then also Lappin Agency to get a referral of, of an appraiser, and so I sent our RFP to them, and HCA is one of them, and then there's another company, but they ended up backing out. So Asset Works is a company that somehow saw our RFP online, I didn't even contact them, but we came in with a really low bid, and that's under what we budgeted, so it's my recommendation.
This is why I like multiple bids.
Do we know anything about Asset Works though, besides the bid number they gave us, any referrals, or do they have?
Recommendations? I, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was one in our packet.
Yeah. I, I sent out three of them and only received one response.
They did well in Florida. That's where they were.
And they're probably in F Y O because it's getting knocked down by hurricanes or everything.
Yeah.
They have to be appraising, I mean, rebuild.
Okay, I move we award the bid to Asset Works LLC for the bid price of eleven thousand seven hundred and ninety-five dollars with the annual update of six hundred and fifty.
Second.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noak?
Yes.
Walagora?
Aye.
Hess?
Yes.
And Johnson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
I move we adjourn to closed session to discuss water and sewer litigation.
Noak?
Yes.
Walagora? Hess?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And Nielsen?
Yes.
Motion carried.